Mic check.
Ryan, what are you and Katie eating back there?
I think you're allowed to eat in the council chamber. Are you allowed to eat in the council chamber? I was told we couldn't.
Yeah, the rules are really up in the air.
Everybody's eating. Look at Georgia. I saw everybody doing this.
You can only have water on your own. That's not allowed.
Everything's kind of...
You're not running out of time.
No, I've never been accused of that.
That's how I was told.
If Bogart was here, we'd only have water.
Ready?
Yes.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Sugar Island City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 20th. A little bit about our agenda tonight. In a minute, we're going to go into closed executive session. Following that, we'll come back and we'll follow our regular agenda, which will include an invocation first by Councilmember Carmelli, followed by the pledge to the nation's flag. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and adjourn an executive session in the council dining room. Oh, I'm sorry about that, Marissa. Item number two, close executive session. A, close executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with 55108-7, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Now we can adjourn it to the council.
Thank you. Very good. Well, that was my last.
...
...
City of Sugar Land City Council meeting for the twentieth of December. First item on the agenda after the closed executive session is the invocation that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance in the shot.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, as we gather here today, let me start by saying thank you. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and the measures of good health and for friendship. God, we ask that you keep all of our men and women in our armed forces, our police, fire, EMS, and healthcare heroes safe. As we are in the full swing of the holiday season, we ask that you keep all of our residents safe who are traveling to visit family and friends and all of those who are entering our beautiful city to spend the holidays here. Please guide our entire city council and our staff as we continue to work for the betterment of our citizens first. We ask that you continue to guide us along the right path and keep us under your protection and your grace. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, public comment. Thomas, do we have anybody signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda, we're going to take all these items as one motion unless the council member pulls an item, at which time we'll take that item separately from the other items. Council members, got a motion by McCutcheon, do I have a second? Second by Watley. Vote this time, please. And it passes unanimously seven to zero. Thank you, council members. Item number five, public hearings, five A, public hearing. Receiving here all persons desiring to be heard on the schedule of rates to establish and levy drainage charges for the implementation of a municipal drainage utility system. We have with us tonight Kristin Eubanks, our environmental compliance coordinator. Kristin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I understand we've discussed the stormwater compliance fee a couple of weeks ago, but tonight we're holding a public hearing on the charges associated to the fee. So just to review, the stormwater compliance fee creates a dedicated, sustainable funding source for the city's stormwater management program. Some of those activities are TCQ, MS4 compliance and control measures. Those are the unfunded mandates that we have to comply with. There are the drainage system operations, maintenance, inlet inspection, mosquito spraying, street sweeping, just to name a few. So I'll go over who is eligible for the fee, what are the monthly rates, and how we inform the public about the compliance fee. So staff under the direction of council came with this list of non-exempt customers. These are single-family residential properties, commercial properties, and houses of worship. The exempt properties are city, school districts, and county properties. There are a few properties we are required to exempt listed here. So the stormwater compliance fee is calculated using impervious cover. Impervious cover is any hard or compact surface that doesn't allow for direct infiltration of rainwater. So the more impervious cover a property has, ultimately the higher impact on the storm system. You go over the fee model for residential properties, tier one, it's a three-tier system. Tier one is from zero to thirty-five hundred square feet of impervious cover, and that's a dollar ninety-eight per month. Tier two is thirty-five hundred to forty-eight hundred square feet, and that's two dollars and ninety-six cents per month. And tier three is forty-eight hundred and above, and that is four dollars and forty-four cents per month. So to review, the fee model began January of 2023. The residential rate, there are three tiers, and the commercial rate is based on the average residential impervious area square footage. So we communicated the fee by attending HOA meetings, hosting meetings throughout the city, posting to online on Facebook, Nextdoor, created a Find My Fee tool. We've posted in the, posted a direct mailer, a notification of the monthly bill, as well as given public notice. So it was our recommendation to hold a public hearing to all persons interested in and adopt the schedule of rates to establish and levy drainage charges for the implementation of a municipal drainage utility system. The stormwater compliance fee will be levied against all benefited properties, properties subject to charges under the Municipal Drainage Utility Systems Act and is to be effective January one, 2023.
Thank you, Kristin. We're going to hold any questions until after the public hearing. This time, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite anyone from the public that wants to speak on this particular item to come to the podium, name, address, and you'll have three minutes. Anybody?
And we have no early signups, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody signed up. Second call from the audience. We're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Consideration of an action to adopt scheduled rates that constitute the stormwater compliance fee that will be levied against all benefited properties under the municipal drainage system created pursuant to ordinance number twenty-two eighty-three. Council members, any question or a motion?
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Kermally, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ferguson. You vote at this time, please. And it's a seven of vote. Thank you, council members. Item number six, ordinances and resolutions, six A, first consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land ordinance number twenty-two eighty-eight. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, amended the code of ordinance ordinances by amending certain provisions in Chapter Three, Article Nine, solid waste recyclable materials, and vegetation in Chapter Two, Article Five, Division Four fees for various city services, and other matters related thereto. And we have Ms. Georgia Tate, our environmental manager. Georgia?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Hopefully, this is the last time you will see me for quite a while. This is tying the bow on all of those solid waste changes that you have already approved earlier this year through our contract. Tonight, we are updating the ordinance to match the new contract, as well as some other changes that city staff is recommending to council. A little background information, this process started a year and a half ago, and we are right there at the finish line, beginning with the task force, the solid waste task force appointments last summer. The task force presented recommendations to City Council in March of this year. We then released an RFP based on council's direction in April. We then had those proposals due in May. And then we came back to City Council with those proposals back in June, where you provided us direction to enter contract negotiations. That contract was then brought back to you in September, which you approved on September sixth, which is to begin implementation in January, so a couple of weeks from now. And tonight, we're updating the solid waste ordinance to match the contract with those items that you approved back in September. So all of this is stuff you have seen before. The first ordinance modification is adding the clear bag requirement for green waste. This is only for residents that choose to bag their green waste. They are still able to use personal containers if they choose. Keep in mind that seventy percent of our residents actually have a hauler or a contractor that comes in and does their green waste. This does not apply to branches or limbs. It's only for soft green waste, so your yard clippings, your leaves. There are several reasons for this. The first is the reimbursements for green waste. Anytime we have a major event and we actually do debris removal, we actually are required to utilize clear bags for that emergency recovery operations. And so instead of educating the residents year-round, we presented this recommendation to you earlier this year to educate them year-round, I'm sorry, instead of in the middle of an emergency. Clear bags also help us reduce contamination. We actually recycle our green waste in Sugar Land, and so if we can keep it as uncontaminated as possible, that really helps us meet our diversion goals. And again, this is updating to reflect the new solid waste contract that has the clear bag requirement included. The next item is we're updating the bulky waste collection in the ordinance. The previous ordinance called out the monthly collection of bulky waste, and with the new contract, we're switching to that flexible on-call collection. So we want to make sure that the ordinance specifies that. So instead of collecting on the monthly Monday for residents, it will now be an on-call program where they call and schedule. They still receive twelve bulky collections per year, in addition to their three extra holiday collections in the year. And again, we're just updating this item to reflect the new solid waste contract. We also updated a few definitions in the ordinance. These definitions hadn't been updated for some time, and during our contract sequence this year, we actually went through and reviewed all of the definitions in the RFP and in the contract with our outside legal counsel, as well as our internal legal team. And so we made a few modifications to the ordinance just to provide additional clarity in some of those definitions. The next item that we updated is our textile recycling collection. The next item that we updated is our textile recycling collection. Similar to bulky waste, it was collected on a service day. We have since updated our contract to be an on-call flexible collection. We brought that textile contract to you last November. That was my first council presentation, and that's an item that is actually free for Sugar Land residents. So it's no longer provided on a service day. Residents have to call and schedule it when they need it. And again, we're just updating the ordinance to match the textile recycling contract that you've already approved. The next item is actually updating our commercial collection time for very specific commercial customers in Sugar Land. This is for those commercial properties that are very close to residential properties. The previous ordinance, or the Code of Ordinances previously stated that if a, if a commercial property was in four hundred feet of a residence, it could not be serviced until 7:00 a.m. Trying to be good neighbors, we don't want to wake people up too early. We've learned that four hundred feet is not as far as it seems, and so we're updating the ordinance to actually be a thousand feet. So that means that those commercial properties cannot be serviced before 7:00 a.m. if they are within a thousand feet of a residence in Sugar Land. Again, this was included in the solid waste contract this year, and so we're updating it to match the solid waste contract. The final ordinance modification is the commercial hauler fee amount. We're updating the fee amount for commercial hauler collection. If you'll remember earlier this year, we discussed franchise fees and what the rate is for our commercial customers. The revenue from these, these rates is used for debris removal. It's also utilized for street rehab. We transfer some of those funds to Public Works every year. Previously, the revenues were, or previously, the fee amount was five percent of gross revenues for those haulers. The new fee, which was also negotiated with the solid waste contract, is ten percent of gross revenues. And again, we're updating the ordinance, or the fee ordinance, to match the new solid waste contract. Similar to a lot of the items we've brought forward, we have done quite a bit of work educating the residents in our commercial businesses, as well as those outside landscapers on all of the changes that are coming. We have conducted HOA meetings. We've been at every city event, hosted many community meetings, put information on Nextdoor and Facebook. We also have created many handouts and actually sent direct mailers to our residents. Those went out last week, so our residents are aware of what's happening. And so we've done everything we can to educate the residents on that information. With that being said, staff's recommendation is for City Council to hold a public hearing and approve on First Reading Ordinance Number 2288, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending certain provisions in Chapter 3, Article 4, solid waste recyclable materials and vegetation, I'm sorry, Article 9, and Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 4, fees for various city services and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Georgia. There is no public hearing tonight, so we're going to go straight to consideration and action. Any questions from the council members? Carol?
Well, Georgia, first, I'd like to thank you for all of your tremendous work that you've put in on this. And I've gotten quite a bit of positive feedback from residents about the flexible on-call bulk waste. I wanted to let you know about that.
Thank you.
And do you have any sort of a ballpark timeframe as to when you'll be back to council with the household hazardous waste?
Yes, ma'am. So first priority is getting that contract off the ground in a couple of weeks. Our goal is to bring something back to you by the summer, since we presented those recommendations last summer.
Anyone else? Michelle?
Georgia? Yes, most of this we've heard, but there is one item in there that I'm, I'm hearing for the first time, and it's contract details, and that's, you're the expert, obviously. Four hundred feet to a thousand feet, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
So a little bit more than a football field today, and now we're going to three football fields, a little bit more than three football fields. How does that affect our residents? How much, how many residents does it really affect?
It, it doesn't affect that many residences. We, we really have very few residences that are that close to a commercial property, but there are a few. And again, this is just delaying when the service can occur. Instead of a resident being possibly woken up at five o'clock in the morning, that servicing will be much later in the morning, after 7:00 a.m. It does get kind of loud lifting the dumpster, but it is very few residents that are actually impacted.
Okay, great. And then one more question there. The app for residents to be able to call on, on demand, when is that going to be rolled out? Is that ready to be rolled out?
Yes, so the, the app is almost ready. We're finalizing touches. We'll have an update for City Council in the next few weeks on that. And that information, the app will allow residents to schedule the bulky waste. It'll allow them to look up their green waste service day, all the items we talked about tonight. So we're working on it. I do not have a final answer for you, but I can get you one pretty quickly.
Mayor, can I follow up?
Follow.
Will it not roll out January 16th?
It will roll out before January 16th. Yes, sir. I just don't have the actual date yet. We're still working with the IT department to get that figured out.
Excellent, thank you. And just on follow-up for what Carol said, I'm hearing some great things as well, and I've noticed a lot of my neighbors have gone to the clear bags. I noticed a lot of that last, last Thursday evening, and I noticed, I told my wife, and she said, why do you care? And I said, because we're making a change. And I saw a lot of my neighbors have done it. So the word's already out there.
Yes, we love to hear that. Thank you.
Good. William?
Georgia, we've talked about a lot of the details in this before. I'm curious, now that it's brought up, why do we not have a date on the app yet when it'll be released? This has been a subject of a lot of conversation. I don't understand.
Yes, sir. So the, the issue with the app is we're actually having to upload every single residential route under the current contract, as well as every single residential route under the new contract. So that's thirty-five thousand households, and so it's, it's taking some time to get all of those new routes updated, because we did change routes with the new solid waste contract. And we want to make sure that the app is right before we roll it out to our residents. We don't want to cause any issues or concerns for them. And so it is taking quite a bit of time to update that information. That's being done on the IT department side of the contractor. And so it's not something that I have direct supervision over, but we are monitoring them very closely, and they know that January is a hard deadline. It has to be ready before the new contract.
And, and if I may?
Follow.
I think my concern is that, for some reason, I thought you had a date. I, I really did, because of our conference. So much hinges on how well this service or change occurs to the community. I really love the idea of the app, all the information you're going to provide, and to think that we're give or take three weeks away, and we don't even know it's, we don't know. And so that's a little concerning to me, if I may.
I'll follow up with the contractor and get an answer to council tomorrow.
Anyone else I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Kermally. Vote at this time, please. And it's a seven oh vote. Thank you, council members. Item number 6B, consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Resolution Number 2253, a resolution of City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Texas General Land Office, GLO, for Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, CDBG MIT Regional Method of Distribution, MOD, program. And designated the city manager or his designee is authorized representative or official to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant, and to execute all grant-related documents. Jorge Alba, our senior engineering manager. Jorge?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. So let me start tonight's presentation with some background on this resolution. After the Flooding Events in 2015, 2016, and Hurricane Harvey in 2017, the Brazos River Banks presented accelerated bank erosion in thirteen critical locations along the river in Forebend County. The City of Sugar Land and Forebend County commissioned two erosion studies on the Brazos River in 2018. These stories concluded that if no mitigation is implemented, in less than thirty years, the erosion could threaten residences, city and county infrastructure, parks, evacuation routes, and even highway bridges. The city and Forebend County created Project Brazos in 2018, which is a multidisciplinary project, or multi, I'm sorry, multi-jurisdictional effort to address the causes of the river banker ocean, and it has the support from local, state, and federal stakeholders. Two of these critical locations in the city are Memorial Park and the US-59 IH-69 evacuation corridor. These are the two locations where we need to implement the projects, US-59 and down here in Memorial Park. So now, let's talk about the grant application and funding, which is the object of the resolution. As part of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Action Plan, which is also known as CDBG MIT, the city received an allocation of $4,063,000. Forebend County, on the other hand, they received an allocation of $56,030,000. Now, the two jurisdictions will use their combined funding for the two erosion projects located in the City of Sugar Land, the Memorial Park and the IH-69 project. If you remember, in October of this year, City Council approved contract with Hewitt Zoller and with Public Management Inc. to support the city staff during the preparation of the submittal of the applications to the CBDG MIT MOD program. So what we have done since then, city staff and the consultant has completed the following task. We conducted a public comments meeting on October 18 of 2022. We prepared two inter-local agreements between the city-county and the city, I'm sorry, between the county and the city, to cover both locations for the projects. We completed the application to the Texas GLO, and the next thing that we need to do is to add to the application this resolution, if you approve it tonight, so we can submit the application to Texas GLO in January 9, 2023. We anticipate this grant to be awarded in June on 2023. So our recommendation, city staff request the city council to approve Resolution Number 2253, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Texas General Land Office, GLO, for Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, CDBG MIT Regional Method of Distribution Program, for funding of the Brazos River Erosion Project and Memorial Park, and the Brazos River Erosion Project at the Interstate Highway 6959, to protect residents and provide safe evacuation routes during emergency events. With this, if city council has any question for me?
Jorge, a comment. We began this effort, the City of Sugar Land as the lead agency, back in 2014, and here we are now, and it will be 2023 when we finally get final approval. It's an example, and staff has done an extraordinary job of bringing this together. Our consultant, Hewitt Zollers, has done an extraordinary job negotiating with the county. The county came on board. We've even had some changes in county government. But through it all, we stayed the course, and we finally gotten funding for only a portion. There were thirteen projects that you referenced. I think there are twenty-six across the county. It represents $1.4 billion that will need. So this is only the start. These are the first, most important projects in, in Sugar Land. The county has another one, another project up in Simonton. But it's been an extraordinary effort. Compliments to staff, to our consultant for, for staying with us, specifically Chris Stubing, our assistant city manager, who also happens to be an engineer, and more or less between he and the consultant, that kind of led this effort. So it's, it's actually my, a great, great job on behalf of the city staff to get this. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, and I've got a second by Lain. Any other comments? Carol?
Just a quick, quick question. Do you remember regarding the erosion along the Brazos River, do you remember offhand how many feet was the worst erosion there?
Then the Memorial Park specifically, since 2015, we had lost approximately 200 feet of land.
200 feet, okay.
From, from where it was back in 2015.
Okay.
Suzanne? Yeah, go ahead, William.
And I know details will follow after tonight, but the portion at the freeway, 59, I mean, every time I drive over there, I'm always, when is this going to happen? So can you give us what that'll look like? Are they going to push back the, any, anything at all, in general? No details?
So, so, so the project that will be sponsored, part of the inter-local agreement that you will be approving in a minute, that will cover the protection of the bank on Lead 17 and on Lead 11. But also, in coordination with TextDOT, that they have to do modifications to the bridge, to the highway bridge, that they have to expand the spans of the bridge to allow the river to come on there and minimize the erosion that is happening.
Thank you. This is very exciting. Thank you.
Jorge, Chris, you probably have the answer. You or Greg? The expected expenditure by TextDOT is in the range of how many million?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. TextDOT has approved for the bridge work around $70,000, $75,000, last time we talked with James Koch and his team. And then Jesse and her team are working with them now about other improvements that the city's identified along the 69 corridor at intersections and everything else to help because of the turnaround issue and everything else. So we're working hard with him as well to advance that, and they are including the same approach underneath the bridge as well, to keep the erosion and stuff set, and we'll tie and we're coordinating all that effort at this point in time.
They'll probably be at a hundred million before they get finished.
We're trying.
Thank you. Anyone else? Got a motion, got a second, if you vote at this time, please? There we go. And we got a seven oh vote. Thank you, council members. Thanks, Jorge. Item number seven, contracts and agreements, 7A, consideration of an action on authorization of two inter-local agreements with Fort Bend County Drainage District for joint participation to apply for US Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Funds for the Item 1, Protection of Memorial Park Project, and Item 2, IH-69 Evacuation Route Protection Project. Jorge?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So these two items, these two inter-local agreements are connected to the resolution that you just approved. And again, a little bit of background, I just mentioned before that as part of the, the CDBG MIT grant, the city received the $4,063,000. Forebend County received an allocation of $56,000. So the county and the city are going to combine the efforts for the Memorial Park and the US-59 evacuation corridor. So now, how this money is going to be distributed, how the funding is going to be distributed? So for the US-59 IH-69, the total cost of the project is estimated $31,309,000 roughly. Forebend County will provide $29,277,000, and the city will provide $2,031,000. And I listed there in detail how much is for engineering, construction, and administration, if you want to look into more detail. Now, for the second project, which is at Memorial Park, the total cost is $11,247,000. Forebend County will provide $9,215,000, and the city will provide $2,031,000. Now, the allocation then for both projects from Forebend County, they will be using $38,492,000, and the City of Sugar Land will be using the total allocation of $4,063,000. Now, with the remaining allocation that the county has, which is approximately $17,500,000, they will be using that for improvements, also protection for Forebend County Lead 10, which happened to be also in the City of Sugar Land, improvement to Steep Bank Creek, and improvements to Moston Value Detention. Now, what are going to be the roles and responsibilities between the county and the city? Each jurisdiction will have a separate contract with GLO, and will be subject to all the various compliances and regulations of the state of Texas. The projects do not anticipate the need for acquiring permanent easements or parcels. However, we may need temporary construction easements during the construction of the projects. Both parties, the county and the city, will need to establish property ownership, and responsibilities of the long-term maintenance of the improvements are required by the GLO. During the construction, during the design and construction, Forebend County Drainage District will take the lead on both projects with additional support from city staff. So tonight's recommendation, city staff requests the city council to authorize two inter-local agreements between the City of Sugar Land and Forebend County Drainage District to coordinate the efforts that each jurisdiction is undergoing as part of the CDBG MIT Regional Method of Distribution applications. The two jurisdictions will use their combined funding for the US-59 IH-69 evacuation corridors and the Memorial Park projects. So with this, if city council has any additional question?
Chris? Suzanne?
Thank you, Jorge. This is, this is really interesting. I'm looking at the exhibit you have here with I'm looking at the exhibit you have here with the work being done in Memorial Park. And you just mentioned maintenance. What maintenance is left to do once we put this into place?
Well, in, in general, for this project, these erosion protection projects, the, the method that we are going to be using is the method approved by the Corps of Engineers, which they call Design with Nature, kind of self-healing bunker protection. So it's really not going to require any mental, because what the method uses provides sediment that allow grow vegetation to protect the banks. So in these particular cases, there is really not going to be additional maintenance. But GLO requires that in the agreement with them, the city and the county provide any maintenance necessary for these projects.
But there will be additional boulders, rock that will need to be added over time as, as the, Greg can explain it better, but as the rock launches down into the river to protect the erosion, there will be required over time, boulders that will need to be reestablished. So it will require some. Carol.
So what work will be done along Steep Bank Creek?
I'm not sure about that. That would be done by the county.
Oh, okay, just by the county.
I don't know if Greg has any additional information to share with us?
Okay, while he's coming up.
Since Greg is also providing support to the county.
Oh, yes, right, okay, great, okay.
Yes, Mayor and Council. On Steep Bank Creek, there are some grade control structures that are going to be both rehabbed as well as some new ones put in to reduce the amount of scour in the bottom of Steep Bank Creek so that it doesn't scour out and cause major erosion problems along that. It's really a minor project, only a million or two compared to what the other work's been done.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. And what is Lit 10? Which lit is that?
Lit 10 is a gray wood.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I always get them confused. River Park.
Thank you. A motion to approve.
Got a motion by McCutcheon. Do I have a second? Got a second by Cromley if you voted this time, please? And it passes 7-0. Thank you, council members. Item number 7B, Consideration of an Action on Authorization of a Contract with Matula, Matula Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,347,715 for the lift station rehabilitation project for Elkins, lift station number 24, and Terrace View, lift station number 507, CIP CWW 2202. And we have Andrea Broton, our Assistant City Engineer. Andrew?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We have the, we have the award of the construction phase of this project as part of our annual lift station rehab program. The original design that was prepared for the bid process included three lift stations. Elkins number 24, Terrace View, number 507, and Robinson's Ferry, number 32. Here's a brief look at where these are generally in the city. The project's scope included rehab of the lift station components that included valve valve improvement, new pumps, riser and header pumping, electrical improvements, wet well recoding, and SCADA connectivity. Regarding the contractor selection, as I said, the bid package included three lift stations. Two of them were part of the base bid, and one of them, the lift station in Robinson Ferry, was included as an ad alternate, which, you know, we would award depending on the prices that we receive for those improvements. The bid was advertised on October 5th and October 12th of this year, and we received five bids on October 27th. And we have here the bid summary, the five contractors that bid. They range from 1.3 million all the way up to 1.7 for the base bid, and all the way up to 1.865 for the base bid and I had alternate at the highest bid. The available budget for this project is $1,570,140. With this in mind, staff recommends to award the base bid items only in the amount of $1,347,715. Summary of the project funding, our funding needs for this phase for the construction, as I mentioned, for the base bid items was a little over 1.3 million with a contingency of 5% that we typically have set aside for our projects, $67,385, and the construction admin of $21,000. This brings the total funding needed for this phase to $1,436,170. And available funding is a little over 1.5 million, so we do have adequate funding for this recommendation. Based on if we are approved to award this this evening, the notice to proceed would be written for the first of the year in January. The project will take approximately 270 calendar days to get to substantial completion, which will put us about in October of 2023. Regarding the construction impacts and notifications, these projects are all within project on city property. So there will not, we don't anticipate any Senator Sewer Service interruptions. If for any reason there is some notification needed, once we get into the project, we'll utilize what the method that's appropriate, whether it be door hangers, mailouts, or one-on-one communications if we, if we feel that necessary. With that in mind, staff recommends that the city council authorize the execution of a construction contract with Matula, Matula Construction for the rehab of the two lift stations, Elkins and Terrace View, in the amount of $1,347,715. Thank you.
I hear any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion, Bill Crum.
Got a motion by Ferguson, second by Cromley. If you vote at this time, please? And it passes 7-0. Thank you, council members. Item number eight, Workshop 8A, Review of and Discussion on Proposed Reimbursement Agreement for Financial Support for Pre-Development and Construction Costs to Puma Development for the Preservation and Redevelopment of the Char House. We've got with us tonight Ms. Devon Rodriguez, our Deputy Director of Economic Development, and Mr. Jim Callaway, our Director of Special Projects. Devon?
Mayor, prior to your pardon, I'm going to recuse myself, even though I don't have a conflict of entrance with Puma or anything in Imperial, but I'm going to recuse myself, if you don't mind.
Devon?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So tonight, we've heard a lot about interest in developing in Imperial property, specifically the Char House. And so this is one of the first items that we are bringing forward for your workshopping and future consideration. Tonight, we're going to just kind of give a brief overview of the project as well as the structure of a reimbursement agreement as one piece of financial support that we are bringing forward for consideration. I also will cover a little bit of sort of the community engagement that we've done to date. But to start off, I wanted to invite Mark Toon with Puma Development to give just a brief overview of Puma as well as what they are proposing out at the Imperial Char House. Mark?
Thank you. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. First of all, it's great to be here in front of you. I know, I recognize several of your faces from the town halls over the last few weeks. And I don't feel much better than I did three weeks ago in the town halls. But I can't get rid of this drainage for some reason or another. But anyway, just so everybody knows, I've been, I am an entrepreneur, kind of a serial entrepreneur. I own a venture capital firm in the Houston area. And one of my investments is a company called The Canon. And we're very, very focused on creating ecosystems for early-stage companies and really building a community around those early-stage companies that would include large corporations and mentors and venture money and, and actually enabling startups to talk to each other. And that's how I was introduced really to this particular piece of property and really the city of Sugar Land nearly two years ago. We have eight Canons across the Houston area currently. And in conversations with really your Economic Development Group, which has done a great job, by the way, you know, we kind of honed in on the Imperial location to put a Canon and, and put the land under contract for the second time in October of this particular year. So we're really excited about the opportunity, but we're certainly taking a slightly different slant than maybe a traditional developer would. I've had a development company for a number of years now, and we love the adaptive reuse of this particular type of project. And so we're, like I said, we're very, very excited about what we have planned really for the entire project. I think it's important to state, though, that my point of view is that it needs to start with the most iconic building on the site, which is the Char House itself. And so even though I think we're, you know, our plan is really a large mixed-use development on over, over 40 acres, we feel like that the first place to start is in a very specific 80-by-107-foot building that's eight stories tall and, and certainly iconic for the city of Sugar Land. I think one of the things to point out here is that we've, as developers, we also try to take inspiration from other locations. And although I won't mention all of these here, we do best practice visits with developers of places like The Pearl in San Antonio as an example. I'm also, my parents have lived in green for 45 years. So there's things about green we love, which is how do you take historical architecture and actually adaptively reuse that particular architecture, but at the same time still have that feel that it's the same it was 45 years ago? So anyway, those kinds of inspirations are certainly what our objective is. When you look at the total project, I can't sit here and tell you to date exactly how many square foot of office or retail or residential or multifamily that we would ultimately have. I mean, it's a project that we've been going on for a number of months now to identify the site plan, really evaluate that site plan, and look at specifics. But we do want to make this kind of a, a very focused effort around the historic buildings, which there's a debate on whether there's four or five of them. Goal on record to say that the silos are in our plans. So we don't plan on, even though the silos were built in 1992, we don't plan on removing those silos. We certainly plan on keeping those. Phase one is the Char House. To give you a little bit of color around the Char House, we want to turn that into an office in which the Canon would be the primary resident in that office. The Canon, like I said, is a place where these early-stage companies can go and reside. Like I said, we have eight of them across the city. You can be more than welcome to come and visit any of those locations. But that would be kind of the primary hub of the Canon in this particular area. The first story and the rooftop, we would turn into food and beverage and/or retail. So it's a kind of an interesting kind of approach. But in the town halls, probably the only thing I said that was positive, you know, massively positive was making sure that you could at least eat or drink on the roof. I don't know what that means exactly, but, but we do plan on doing that. With that, I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Mark. So as Mark touched on also a little bit, we've approached this very differently than we have in projects in the past. There, he does not currently own the property. There is no site plan. There is no development application that we are bringing forward. But the Imperial Sugar Site and specifically the Char House is how Sugar Land got its start, got its name, and has a lot of not only historical value, but family history value for many families here in Sugar Land. And because of that, we took a very proactive approach in our community engagement with the possibility of this project moving forward. So we did have a joint press release. There is a project webpage, which, I'm sorry for folks, it's kind of hard with that blue. It's hard to see, but sugarlandtx.gov/ImperialHistoricDistrict has all the current information that we have on the project to date, as well as frequently asked questions and the ability for the public to continue to submit questions, comments, and feedback, which we have continued to receive daily and respond to. So I encourage those that are watching to continue to do that because we are reading them, we are responding to them. We also had an initial stakeholder meeting following at the same time as the press release going out for those that are leaders in the neighborhoods and communities that are surrounding the Imperial Sugar Site. We then held two town halls, December 8th and December 15th. First, 140 people attended our December 8th Town Hall and 80 people attended our December 15th Town Hall. So a tremendous showing of the community that was interested in the project. We did run out of chairs the first night and, and made sure that we had plenty the December 15th. We also have had a tremendous amount of media, those that we owned and earned in terms of what we put out there on our blogs and our social media platforms, as well as interest from Community Impact, Houston Business Journal, KPRC, and KHOU have all featured this project as part of their coverage. As part of this, we have been collecting community sentiment over the last couple of weeks since we made this announcement. And this sentiment has resulted from engagement online as well as the in-person town hall. So all of that feedback and sentiment that we received from people that attended the town halls, as well as written comments have all been submitted. We use this Zen City analysis to kind of give us a picture about what the sentiment is. And overall, there's been 70, is, the sentiment has been 74% positive, 2% negative, and 24% neutral. So most residents really are supportive of the preservation of the Imperial Char House with the historical aspect of the building obviously being the most critical component, which is why we're all here tonight. Some of the residents' concerns that might be negative or just kind of neutral comments revolve around traffic concerns. And then also we have the breakdown there of the town halls and the earned media in terms of positive, negative, and neutral sentiment. And just for example, for those that might be wondering, like, what is, what does neutral mean? You know, it, it's not positive or negative. It could be something like trees would be nice or just something general feedback or comment on the, on the project, but not swaying one way or the other. So this project is complex. It is an expensive endeavor in terms of focusing on preserving and adaptive reuse of the Imperial Char House. So there has been a financial support request that has been made by Puma to the city. Initially have a reimbursement agreement for pre-development and construction costs. And the total amount of that would be pre-development. So this, I mentioned, I can't say it enough, this is the very initial stages of this project. And so there is still more due diligence and more pre-development work that needs to be done as part of it as we inch closer to seeing if we can make this project feasibly happen. So with that, we have, we're proposing a reimbursement agreement, and this is kind of the overarching framework of that. It is split up into three separate amounts that are triggered by certain phases of the project as it progresses. The first point being the pre-closing cap of 1.5 million. This would be the reimbursement of pre-development costs with specific deliverables. So we would have a exhibit that would outline what is the budget, what are the consultants, and what are the deliverables, studies, reports, plans. This can be anything from engineering drawings to traffic study to historical tax credit consulting. So those are some examples of what those pre-development reimbursement costs would be. And that 1.5 would, all of this would be on a reimbursement basis and the city paying those costs to the consultants and having then ownership of all of those studies, reports, plans, et cetera, as a result of that 1.5. This would all be, the 1.5 would all be before Puma Development would close on the property. So these are expenses upfront before that closing would take place. Following, if the closing was to take place and Puma Development becomes owners of that property, there would then be an additional 500,000 that would be available as part of this reimbursement agreement on a reimbursement basis, but for pre-development costs that would be outlined in the agreement in an exhibit of what those deliverables are. Again, the city retaining ownership of any of those deliverables, studies, reports, et cetera. And then finally, the third component is actual construction funds towards constructing redevelopment of the Imperial Char House. This would be split up into 50%, 1.5 million being available throughout the construction period, again, on a reimbursement basis. And then the final 1.5 would be withheld until certificate of occupancy. And so that is sort of the outline of what we are proposing in terms of a reimbursement agreement. To get this project moving further along, to see the feasibility of it as we kind of reach towards this larger vision of adaptive reuse of the Char House. Again, you know, I think we're shooting for the highest and best use of this building rather than maybe maintenance or of a, of an existing building that doesn't have another use. So that is the framework of the reimbursement agreement. And then there are still, I said, this is as we move forward with this project to see if we can make this happen. There will be additional public financing requests. There will be entitlement requests in terms of zoning for the, not only the Char House area, but the overall vision for the mixed-use area. Obviously, land acquisition needs to take place, or purchase agreements that is not owned by Puma Development yet. And then, other private financing that will need to be, or other funding sources that will need to be secured in order to make this project fruition. I only bring this up as that this is the very beginning stages, and we have many other steps, and we will be back here again as we move along in this process. So, upcoming steps is we would like to bring forward then for a consideration of approval of the reimbursement agreement in January, with possible other financial support considerations happening in the January and February timeframe, and February and March would be entitlement approvals. You might ask why January to March. This is all based off of the purchase agreement timeframe that Puma Development has, to consider whether they will be moving forward with purchasing the property and moving forward with doing this project. And I believe that's my last slide.
Questions of Devon or Mark? Suzanne?
Thank you. Devon, can you point out exactly where these funds will be distributed to, or what area? I mean, some people may be confused that they go over to the whole property, but this is just going to be used for the Char House area. Or could you make that clear, please?
Sure, of course. What we are talking about tonight is adaptive reuse of the Imperial Char House building. This specific reimbursement agreement only references a specific tract, which is the Char House building, the engineering building, which is right adjacent to the Char House building. And in general, it's about a one-point-five acre area around those buildings, so subsequent land that's kind of around those. But that is only the focus of what we're talking about in terms of this reimbursement agreement, pre-development costs, deliverables, studies associated with that. It's just that property. We are not talking about the larger future vision of forty-plus acres. This is only Char House-focused.
Follow-up?
Oh.
So, essentially, we are talking about an investment in preserving the Char House in that area specifically.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
A question for Mark. It's a pleasure to meet you. So, you talked about the Canon, bringing that possibly, you know, to the Char House, and this looks similar to the Ion in Houston, correct?
Yes.
So, and you've got several different locations with different ranges of rental, two-hundred, four-fifty, thirteen-hundred to come in. What does your participation look like in the other areas, at the other Canon sites?
And when you say participation, do you mean numbers of companies?
Numbers of companies, I mean, because at the Ion, they have, where you can go in as an individual, or you can be a small company, and they also have the larger companies on a different floor to increase that, you know, that conversation, you know, with the entrepreneurial, with the startups, with the larger companies. And I didn't know if that was the same type of relationships that you would help foster at the Canon.
Correct. I don't know that I can speak specifically to every location we have, but I do know that we have over eleven-hundred companies that are members of the Canon, kind of across the Houston area. And I think if you, you know, specifically, if you look at any of our locations, one of the things that's happened is that those companies grow, and as those companies grow, they actually need to occupy more space. And we're finding that kind of across the board in all of our locations. So, I think that in addition to that, one of the things that we're finding is that the bigger companies, I don't think you can put a fence around innovation, and I think if you look at the Canon, we're not trying to, which I think the Ion has a very specific purpose around Rice University, and I think they're doing a very good job for what they do. What we're trying to do is take innovation and push it to the communities where those people reside. And quite frankly, that's what big companies are doing, too. They're starting to go out of central business districts and move closer to where people live. And I think that, from my perspective at least, if you look at Fort Bend County as a whole, there's nothing like what the Canon is in this particular area. So, we feel like it's a very part of, you know, very, very much a part of the community and the communities that it serves. So, I don't know if that answers your question specifically, but...
Does the Canon have any established relationships with any universities?
We have a relationship with the University of Houston regarding the Bauer School, and specifically the Entrepreneurial School, but we're in conversations currently in Waco with Baylor, in Lubbock with Texas Tech. So, I can't say that we are funded by a single university, but we have partnerships with a number of them.
Okay. Thank you.
William?
Mark, nice to finally meet you.
Good to meet you.
I got to listen to you at the town hall the first night. I think what I want to say, because of so many people that have reached out to me, is I appreciate that you share our passion for our history in this city. And I remember what the lady said when she asked you a question about, would you keep the Imperial Sugar sign? I just absolutely loved your answer. You said, "No, ma'am, we're taking it down. We're replicating it, and we're putting it back up, putting up a new one." And she smiled from ear to ear, because you certainly share our special attraction to that area, and I want to thank you for that.
Sure. You know, what's intriguing about history, currently, the sign is actually on the south and on the west side. But a number of years ago, the south side actually didn't have a sign. It was the west and the east side. So, now, we're in a debating mode, as to, okay, when we put the signs back up, do we have to do it on all four sides? So, but anyway, it's a, I mean, you know, listen, preserving architectural history, I think, is critical, and, you know, and we don't take it lightly as to the use case. I mean, we've looked at a number of use cases with respect to that particular building, and didn't really feel like a hotel made sense. We really didn't feel like lofts or anything like that made sense. We really wanted to try, I mean, first of all, you try the best you possibly can to create a use case that's financially going to make sense. None of them make sense financially, to be honest, and that's one of the reasons we're here, because at the end of the day, the cost of trying to create the, first of all, to get that particular building to the point structurally where it can be used for any purpose, you know, is going to be a very expensive undertaking. One of the reasons that we have the monies in here that we have is we want to get the design finished to the point where we can also go to the two entities that control the historical tax credits, and actually know exactly what our historical tax credit funding is going to be, to try to, you know, really reduce the gap. I mean, at the end of the day, we don't think we're going to reduce the gap between what it costs us to build versus what the real value of that building is going to be financially. I'm not talking about mentally, but financially. And I think that's one of, but we think it's so important to the whole development to make sure that that's the iconic piece. I mean, you know, as we look, for instance, to like The Pearl as an example, you would say that, you know, Hotel Emma is certainly their centerpiece, but it was really that manufacturing facility that was the most important piece to them, and they just turned it into a hotel, because it made sense for San Antonio. So, anyway, but thank you for...
Thank you.
Couple points, Mark. I heard you say it's a public hearing. You know, to do the development of this building, somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five to fifty million dollars. So, the investment that we're considering at this time is, you know, is five million. We knew, we knew on council, staff knew, that in order to save the Char House and actually pursue this development, we knew that we were going to have to put some money in the pot. So, just so the public understands, we'll mitigate that risk as best we can. We believe we've got a unique opportunity to partner with you, Mark, and Puma, and actually end up with, you know, a really, to use your words, an iconic project. We're prepared, we've been asked, and we're prepared, you know, subject to working out the details, of actually taking some space in that building, which would help you secure financing, however you decide to pursue that. But we're excited. I think as a council, you can see from our staff here, we've got two of our best people with Jim Callaway and Devon Rodriguez negotiating with you, and we look forward to what we're going to develop together.
Thank you. Thank you for your words, and appreciate your time.
Devon, I think you've heard from council, I think we're ready to take it forward to the meeting in January, so we look forward to that.
See you January third.
Yes, ma'am. On to number nine, City Council City Manager Reports. I'm going to go to A, City Councilmember reports. Jennifer, I'll start with you.
We had the menorah lighting here on Sunday, and the shiit actually lit the menorah, so we had a great time with the Jewish community and celebrating the Festival of Lights.
Thank you. Suzanne?
That was fast. I know that Carol's going to cover a lot of this, but I wouldn't, because it was my district, we did have the unveiling of the Bob Brown statue in Lake Point, and it was just fabulous. It's a gorgeous statue. Please stop by Lake Point, sit by his statue, and enjoy the view and the memory of Bob Brown, which is a great one.
William?
Well, Mayor...
I didn't catch you off, did I? You were ready to go.
Well, I just didn't want to go after Carol, because there's nothing left after Carol. Okay, so, most of you know that I'm not a sports fan, sorry. I do love the Space Cowboys. But recently, I had an opportunity, because I realized that our local Logos Preparatory School, they did something extremely unique. They've been in the Sugar Land area for about sixteen years, the best they had ever done before in the six-man football. And again, I'm not a sports fan, but they had achieved the eleventh place. And I thought, that's pretty good. I'd take eleventh place. But the other night, in early December, they were behind forty-six to twenty-six going into the fourth quarter. Our Logos Prep, our young men, and they won.
Pulled it out.
They won in the last eight seconds, they won. It was the first moment they were leading the game, and they won. And I am so excited for them, because they're such an important part of our local community, the education, and now the excitement of this six-man football. So, I knew Carol wasn't going to share that, so I had to show a little sports background.
That's Tom Brady-esque.
Thank you.
I guarantee you.
That is.
That's impressive. Well, guess who's going next? Carol.
My reputation precedes me. Okay, yes.
I learn that different every time.
Well, we, most of council attended the unveiling of the Gold Star Families Memorial Monument at Memorial Park on Pearl Harbor Day, and that was a really moving ceremony. And I would just like to say very heartfelt thank you to everyone who made this possible. And also, most of council got to attend the senior holiday gala, and I particularly appreciated hearing about the life-saving awards that our employees got. That was very meaningful. And also, to find out who our champion employees were. And then, also attended the Sugar Land Heritage Foundation Christmas Open House, and that was a lot of fun. We had some good vendors, the nineteen-eleven fire truck was there, and a choir singing, and so it was a real nice afternoon.
Sur.
Thank you, Mayor. I minister the oath of office to our latest addition to our firefighter ranks and EMS ranks, and also to administer the oath to those among those firefighters and EMS, or EMTs, who received promotions. And that was a great privilege, I really appreciate the ability to do that.
Thanks, Sur. And the shiit.
Mayor, this past Saturday, I attended the Santa's Exchange where Fort Bend Exchange and Sugar Land Exchange comes together, and they gave out toys. Five thousand underprivileged young children got toys, thanks to the exchange club and all the efforts that they put in. It was a really, really well-oiled machine, and they do a great job out there. I also attended the town hall last Thursday with Puma Development. Mayor, you were there as well. And, I don't know, was the Hanukkah anything already spoken about?
Okay, it was.
And then, last Thursday, we welcomed Chief Poland and our leadership of our police department to the Espalni Jamaat Khanan Center to show them around there. And just today, Carol, myself, Jennifer, all attended the groundbreaking with Governor Greg Abbott and Houston Mayor Sylvester Turner at the Ivnacina Clinic, which they're groundbreaking on a mental wellness clinic. And Dr. Asim Shah, who we all know very well here in the city, is going to be leading that project for them, and it was a fun event to be at. That's it.
Wonderful. I'm going to focus on one thing, and that's the employees banquet. It was, of course, it was very well-attended, but the real focus was on our champion employees, all of which were selected, and they were honored at that. I thought that was, I was not there for that honor, but Mike and his, and the E-team did an extraordinary job at that banquet. On to number B, City Manager Report. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. This is our last meeting of 2022, so I want to thank the council and the staff for a great year. I'm real proud of what we were able to accomplish. Although I think 2023 is going to be a trailblazing one for us, I'm really excited for '23. We've got some big things in store, and we've got the pump track that's going to be under construction right now, so, and one of the workers told me it's going to be lit. So, I think that's, then, he said that means fast, so it's going to be fast, Mayor.
There you go.
And then, we're going to start soon on the Go Ape, the zip line, wander up in the trees, and so we have a little winter event coming in in a few days, and staff is ready. We've got a lot of employees working towards that. So, just, we'll keep in touch with the public, but we're not expecting a icy-type event. City offices will be closed December twenty-sixth and second for holidays, and I want to thank all of our dozens and dozens of employees that work every one of these holidays, whether it be police, fire, public works, dispatch, you name it, in a lot of areas, so that we can enjoy with our families, and their sacrifice does not go unnoticed. I want to thank them. That's it, Mayor.
And before we wrap up in adjourned, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Have a great, safe holiday, and we'll see you back here after the first of the year.
Looking to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned, Carol. Seven oh-three PM.